We will have our invocation by Reverend and Commissioner Carl Flag of Mount Taber First Baptist Church. Will everyone please stand? Pastor Flag will also lead us in the pledge as well.
Let us bow our heads and reverence our hearts to Almighty God, God who has brought us, God who has taught us, God who have kept us safe thus far on this our journey. We bow our heads and humble our hearts this evening, thanking you for another day's journey. Lord, it is our prayer that all that we do, all that we say, and all that we represent will bring honor and glory to your name. We pray especially for these municipal legislators, that you will lead and guide and direct them. Give them, Heavenly Father, the abilities to work with all of our citizens in ways that will enhance the quality of living for us all. Help them to trust in you and not lean on their own understanding, but to acknowledge you in all of their ways. Lord, bless these students that will be recognized tonight, bless their parents, grandparents, and guardians alike. Bless these school administrators and each individual that sow seeds in the lives of our children. Bless, Lord, any and everything and everyone that comes before this commission tonight, and let positive deliberations take place so that we can have positive outcomes. Bless us all and keep us in the center of your will, and we will give you praise and glory and honor, both now and ever. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Please join me as we salute our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you again, Pastor. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown. Mr. Borum.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Mr. Norwood.
Here.
All members of present county.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the April 14th meeting?
All right. Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Journeying unreadiness, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our public recognition section, which is item one on our agenda. And first up is a law enforcement memorial day proclamation. We would ask that Major Harold from the Sheriff's Office come up. We would also ask Chief Shaw if you would join him at this time as well. I also see Major Stow. Thought we were gonna let you slide today. Get you in multiple capacities. This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the week of May 15th, 2016 through May 21st, 2016, has been designated as National Law Enforcement Week, and whereas May 5th, 2016, has been designated locally as the Putnam County Law Enforcement Memorial Day. Whereas Putnam County has dedicated law enforcement men and women, serving our county under difficult, stressful, and often dangerous circumstances. And whereas law enforcement officers are guardians of life and property, defenders of individuals' rights to be free, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas Florida municipalities within Putnam County desire to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own law enforcement officers comprised of municipal, county, and state law enforcement agencies. Now therefore, I Tarrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby recognize the week of May 15th through May 21st, 2016, as National Law Enforcement Week, and May 5th, 2016, as Putnam County Law Enforcement Memorial Day in the City of Palatka. And I call upon all citizens to honor those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to the community, who have become disabled in performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respects to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Be it further proclaimed, that the citizens of the City of Palatka are urged to show their support and appreciation of our law enforcement officers who give their lives to protect and serve their communities by attending a countywide law enforcement memorial to be held Thursday, May 5th, 2016, at 10:00 a.m. at the Ravine Garden State Park in Palatka. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the city, the seal of the City of Palatka, on this 28th day of April, year of our Lord, 2016, Tarrell Hill Mayor, Commissioner's Mary Lawson Brown, Justin Campbell, Rufus Borum, and James Norwood, Jr.
On behalf of Sheriff Hardy, the 1024 Foundation, and all the men and women in law enforcement throughout Putnam County, thank you, gentlemen, very much, and ladies, thank you very much.
Next up, we have a special recognition, and as Jonathan Garcia, world powerlifting champion in 132-pound weight class, as he comes forward with his special guest tonight, I just want to take this time out to have Mr. Holmes come up as well. First met Jonathan back in the ninth grade, and you can tell by the size of him that he played nose guard for our football team. And what he lacks in size, he makes up for in his tenacity, in his spirit, and his courage. I want to give you guys a little history on Jonathan. Jonathan Garcia has lived in Putnam County since age five. He's attended high school here, from elementary school through graduation at Palatka High School. While at Palatka High School, he won two state championships in weightlifting. After graduation, he was invited to the Olympic Training Facility in Colorado Springs, Colorado, where he lived and trained with the hope of competing in the Olympics. However, after a year of living at the Olympic Training Center, Jonathan made the decision to leave the facility and return home. Training for the Olympics at Colorado Springs facility is a full-time endeavor, leaving no time for employment and not much time for anything else. Jonathan was simply not in a position at that time to pursue the dream of competing in the Olympics. Jonathan, however, never strayed too far from the gym, and in 2008, he competed in the Junior World Weightlifting Championships, an Olympic-style weightlifting competition for competitors between the age of seventeen and twenty-one held in Colombia, South America. He placed sixteenth in the world. Some years later, while Jonathan was working out in the local gym, someone suggested to him that he entered the sport of powerlifting. Powerlifting differs from Olympic-style weightlifting in that the competitors in Olympic-style meets must attempt two lifts. One's called a snatch, and the other's called a clean and jerk in powerlifting. Competitors must attempt three different types of lifts instead of two different types required in Olympic weightlifting. The three lifts are bench press, deadlift, and back squat. In Jonathan's first powerlifting meet, he scored well enough so that he was encouraged to compete in the American National Meet held in Port St. Lucie, Florida, in June 2015. At that meet, Jonathan set a new American record in the bench press in the 132-pound weight class. Jonathan's record lift was 325 pounds, almost three times his body weight. Jonathan's performance qualified him to attend the World Powerlifting Competition held in November in Las Vegas, Nevada. Jonathan went on to win the event in his weight class at 132 pounds, and in the process, set world records in the bench press, 335 pounds, and for the overall lift totals with a deadlift of 495 pounds and a back squat of 485 pounds, a three-lift total of 1,315 pounds. Jonathan continues to reside in Palatka. He's a single parent to his seven-year-old daughter, Jocelyn. Jonathan hopes that his achievements will serve as an encouragement to his daughter and to other young people in Palatka to believe that they can accomplish goals in their lives even if they suffer setbacks or are confronted by obstacles. Jonathan is an example of what's right in Palatka. One more time for Jonathan. And Jonathan, I have Mr. Holmes up here with me. I got a phone call from Attorney Holmes, and he was talking about this young man that he met that he was so impressed with, and he was really excited after just spending a little bit of time with you, and he was rallying the troops to make sure we got you to Nevada. And I can tell you, you've left a lasting impression on everybody who comes in contact with you, and Don Holmes is by far one of your greatest supporters. I can tell you that for a fact. But we've got a special token for you today, and it's a special merit recognition presented in sincerest admiration to Jonathan Garcia, world powerlifting champion, 132-pound weight class, world record holder, bench press 335 pounds, overall three-lift total, 1,315 pounds. In recognition and commendation for your conspicuous demonstration of personal integrity and discipline, the Palatka City Commission hereby extends personal congratulations for your remarkable accomplishments, as in many thanks for being a positive ambassador for the City of Palatka, and heartfelt gratitude for being a positive example to our citizens. Presented this 28th day of April, 2016, Palatka City Commission and staff, Tarrell Hill Mayor. We've only got one more thing that's befitting of a world champion, and that's a key to the city. We want to make sure you take that, and we appreciate you.
That's beautiful, man. Thank you. Just to build on what Terrell was talking about, every time I go to these competitions, whether it be out of state or international competitions, I always like to remember where I came from, you know, whether it's South America or Las Vegas, Nevada, or just wherever it may be, I always try to remember where I came from and do Palatka proud. You often hear so much about Palatka, and negative like, Palatka's on everyone's top-ten list, and I would just always try to represent my town with positivity and be an example for people, no matter what happens in life, you know, whatever obstacles may come your way, you can overcome them, and you know, you should never give up on what you truly want to do. If you feel something is your calling, and whether it be family, just situations financially may not be there for you, you have to keep going forward because you only, you do only get one life, and you don't want to look back and regret not going after what you really, truly wanted. And thank you, guys, again. This is beautiful.
Now, before he leaves, can the commission and Mr., can we take a picture with him? I'd like to send that to our part of Little Cities Magazine. It goes to 410 cities all over the state, and I think we need to let him know that we got quality here. I want to take things come in little packages.
Jonathan, if you want to do one, you and Jocelyn want to do me one more favor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you guys help present the awards for Student of the Month? I can tell you, you are truly an example. You're an example of what we look for in Palatka and our citizens, and there are some great things going on, and if you guys could just stand here, I want you to, it's gonna, maybe it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to be a world champion here, and so we want you guys to help us out. Can you help us out too, Jocelyn? We're not going to recognize our Student of the Month, and this is the time that we all, we take joy in having this occur. But before we recognize our students, we want to make sure that we recognize all the parents and family members who are here with the students at this time. Will you guys please stand or take a bow this time? Because without you, this is only possible because of your support for our young people, and it truly does take a village to raise a child. So what we're gonna do at this time, we're gonna call the students out, we'll ask that a representative from the school accompany the student up. We will line up across the front. Once all the names have been called out, at that time, we'll go ahead and take a break. The school ambassadors will leave, and we'll have just the students up, and we'll take a photo for the newspaper. We'll take a brief intermission, and families can take as many photos as they want at that time. But we're gonna go ahead and start out now. From Browning Pierce Elementary School, Kenneth Thornton. From CL Overturf Sixth Grade Center, Lanny Stallins. From EH Miller School, Demaya Thomas. From James A. Long, Jason Purcell. From James A. Long, Pastor Flag, you'll like this, Serenity Richards. From Jenkins Middle School, Matthew Sharp. From Kelly Smith, Jocelyn Bortorf, Batorf. From Mellon Elementary School, Paxey Bartlett. From Mosley Elementary, Venetria Douglas. From Palatka High School, Hating Harrington. From Penn Our Baptist Academy, Mackenzie Black. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Rosalyn Brown. Last but not least, from Putnam Edge High School, Haley Grace. We want to take this time out to congratulate each and every one of you guys for a wonderful job, for being selected a Student of the Month, and I always want to leave you with a quote that I learned in the third grade, and it simply says, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." And today, you guys are representing exactly what we want our citizens to be. Remember that you can do anything but fail. Continue to keep God first and keep working, okay? We want you guys to continue to press on, and we are definitely proud of you, okay? At this time, we're gonna take a brief intermission. We're gonna ask all the students, we're gonna create two lines in front. We ask all the students to join in, we'll take a photo together. After we take our photo- Our public comment, all public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? You turn the card? I got you. Oh, you were for item 3B. You can go ahead and come on up now.
Do I state my name?
Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Patruci, 905 Tierra Woods Drive, Black, Florida. I wanted to ask you to pull the consent item 3B, which is the authorization execution of a contract lobbying services, to consider again because I feel that that money can be better spent. You can, most of the information that they're providing to you is available online or through contacting the legislature, and I feel that it would be better spent to, you could hire somebody for $15,000 to gather that information for you without paying a lobbying service, and then use $10,000 for something else around in the city. Most of the stuff that they're providing to you is, I mean, they're gonna sit in meetings for you and listen to what's going on. I mean, you can have somebody go to the legislature's website, find out what their legislative agenda is, what committees are doing, and when they're doing it, and provide you that information. You don't need to have somebody sitting in the meeting. I just feel that that money can be better spent, or at least a portion of that money can be better spent on something else in the city. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ask you, Vickers, 207 North 18th Street, here in Black. Here, I have some documents here that I was told to give to Ms. Place over there so she can make copies of it. It's showing the '03 arrests and things that happened during the time when they said that the alcohol was so bad, and I was sure to Mr. Rufus and Mr. Campbell, and to the chief that's why I'm going, so he said he'd like to have a copy of this, and this is official stuff coming from the Sheriff's Department. It's not something I made up because I can't make up stuff that looks like this. This comes from where? The Sheriff's Department. And it tells everything that happened and prior to the ordinance being passed, and this is being referenced to '03. So I was seeing this bestie later to get her to make some copies of this for you all. So I can't give it to you now because I'm gonna keep this in my hand, and I'm not missing out of sight. I don't have any copies. But from that to something else, I want to talk about some things here that we should have done long before, and the first thing is that we, the people, didn't get us in this predicament. The commissions here got us in this. And it's the working poor versus the non-working, wealthy and rich people who have to keep this place and business afloat here. When you run short of money, it's the poor people, not the wealthy and rich people you reach out to. It's the people who can afford it. We're showering up all the money, and they're trickling down to us what they want us to have. Then when we, y'all get in trouble, you reach out to the poor people to get you out of debt. But we didn't get you in debt. It should be a better way for y'all to handle this than try to get it from the poor people all at one time. If it was to trickle down to us, y'all, we'd trickle up to y'all to help y'all get out of it. We'll move to the next step, which is something like this. You all placed us in this thing, you bought the high rise for $3 million at the cost of the poor people to repay that money. The building's over there, you bought that, put us in there. You had 123 pieces of property at one time off the tax roll, y'all purchased at our expense and then gave away at a loss. Mr. Norwood, I talked to you about seven, eight years ago about something, and you have not addressed that problem as of yet, and that's the retention point that y'all have in your property over there. And I look at something a little different, maybe I don't know what I'm doing, but I think I just, if you want to take care of your house, how can we expect you to take care of our house? Because if you were to, see, you said you, if the city ordinance doesn't require you to do that, it's not the city requirement, it's the liability that you should be looking at, plus the lives, the other people in the community could happen in that point and lose their life or something. My time is up?
Time's up.
I didn't get through.
It'll be five seconds to wrap it up. Okay. Thank you, sir.
My name's Jacob Spells. I live at 5019 Kurl Avenue, and I was sent here tonight by my wife, Ms. Annemay Spells, when she learnt that Mr. Will Jones was applying for us board under the housing authority. My wife and Mr. Jones' mother raised him, but he come from the project, kept him through high school into college, and he never forgot the housing authority. When the city or the county wouldn't give my wife a vehicle to take library books around to them, make sure these kids had books in the summer to read, Mr. Jones, my wife and her club made sure that was possible. And we had two pretty nice cars, but it wasn't too good for these kids to get the books out of the trunk for them. So the point I'm trying to make is, you need to select people that know the culture of the project, not people that live in the big house, the BMW cars, that hardly know where the project is. Mr. Jones come back to mentor those kids every summer and pass out books to, he knew the kids that didn't have shoes to wear, jackets to wear in winter, come home without anybody there, sometimes nothing to eat. He knows this. And people that my wife associate her with herself with, Mr. Norwood, Mr. Jones, Ms. Mary Lawson Brown, one other young man that's worked for the FBI, which is stationed in Washington, which I don't prefer to call his name, but these are the people that she dedicated herself to, and they all are doing well, and Mr. Vickers, which dedicated his building for her to help raise money for these kids in the college. My wife is the kind of person that no time of night was too late for her to get up and go through that project to see if one of those people had a problem, so she could have firsthand information to take back to the board so they would be represented properly, not hearing what was on television or what's in the newspaper. She got firsthand information. Then the process went places if they were right, they suffered the penalty if they were wrong, then they didn't deserve it. You don't need people that's afraid to go into these people's living room and talk to them. You can't legislate for me if you don't know me, you don't communicate yourself with me. And over the years, these are the kind of people we've been putting on this board. My wife was basically denied by one of the mayors of Putnam County, but Ms. Brown and Commissioner Norwood saw fit to put her on there, and she, not saying it's because my wife, was the most dedicated person that's ever been on that board, and the evidence speak for itself with her name on the project out on Highway 20. Dedicate people that's gonna speak for these people.
You've got five seconds.
Being on the board for the self-interest, that's not where it should be. Dedicate, I mean, put somebody on the board that's gonna be there for the people and somebody to speak for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one else here, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to item three on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. Item A on the consent agenda is to adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-31 to renew a mutual agreement with TAG Grinding Services Incorporated for Disaster Debris Removal and Disposal Services for 2016-17 Storm Season. B, adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-32, authorize execution of a contract for lobbyist services with Becker &amp; Poliakoff per results of RFQ 2016-01. C, adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-33, renaming Stillwell Drive and the Richdale subdivision to Stillwell with 1L Avenue. D, authorize closure of streets to vehicle or traffic for special events per Permit Number 16-30, law enforcement torch run for Special Olympics, 4/29/16, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Darren Homer applicant. E, grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels and close streets for special events per Permit Number 16-31, private birthday party in North Tim Street in Dunham and Eagle, 6/12/2016, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. F, adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-34, authorize city manager and city clerk to execute and attest the FDOT State Highway System Lighting Maintenance and Compensation Agreement, AN582, fiscal year 2016-17. Are there any items on the consent agenda that we wish to have pulled?
Three F.
I like the movie so we can explain why.
Anything other than items B and F? Yes, sir.
Motion that we approve, items A, C, D, and E.
Motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Item 3B, adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-32, authorize execution of a contract for lobbyist services with Becker &amp; Poliakoff per results of RFQ 2016-01. Commissioner Brown.
This was something brought to our attention by the mayor. We have a- This was something brought to our attention by the mayor. We have a small staff that cannot always keep up with everything that goes on in Tallahassee. And as we go up to lobby from time to time, we find out we have missed items that would have helped us or got us out of things that we needed to have done. We have worked very hard, and I go looking. One of the things I do on a regular basis is look for funding sources for the city of Palacca. And if you want a list of funds that we brought back here, find... One year, we had more grants than we had budget to get us through. Having a person there that sits there and listens and can ask questions and give us information back. Sometimes we miss stuff, and if the people who get the money for the things that go down are the first persons in, get the funds. The last person's in, get nothing. And so with us doing this, it was a way of trying to put us ahead of the curve so that we can get more information. We've been lucky in the past that some of us had had friends in both Washington and in Tallahassee. We had comms people who knew that we were searching for stuff, and they would send information back to us. One of the things was cops. When the cops bill came out years ago, we got five. I think Jacksonville got 50, and Key West got about three. We were the first ones in because we were given the information ahead of time. So just looking for the information is not always what we need. These people are... This company is a professional company, and they understand our needs, and we're trying to get out of this without taxing our citizens anymore than they have to be. And any way we can find a way to bring funding or help into this city, that's what we've been going for.
I think the other thing you gotta understand is, not only is this a state lobbying firm, but they're also a federal firm. And it takes a lot more to get on the plane and go to Tall... than to go to DC than it does to go to Tallahassee. But I think there's an opportunity. I saw the school district recently bring a lobbying service on with David Browning, who's a Palacca native. And within the first two years, they exceeded over half a million dollars in grants and appropriations, just based upon providing that service. And their service was significantly higher than the service that we have. Becker and Poliakoff is by far one of the most respected lobbyists firms out in this country. I think they're gonna be a great partner for this community. Overall, I think there's gonna be... It's gonna be a great relationship, and I think it's gonna take things to the next level as far as it relates to being present when things happen. You know, in the past, we've had commissioners who've had lobbying experience. That's netted us nothing. And so, a lot of the times, it boils down to being at the table at the right time. And driving, and sometimes being three hours away from the table, you'll miss dinner. And so I think there's an opportunity for us to really start to do some different things, especially as a small municipality. It's gonna give us a greater presence. And so I look forward to this. Any other discussion from the commission?
I'd just like to thank him for that challenge I've been getting. I don't know if he knows what our priorities are in terms of what the lobbyist is gonna be doing for us. If they get even one grant that's gonna far exceed the monies that we're paying for, we're gonna get a big return on our investment. Right now, our priorities are infrastructure, it's wastewater treatment facility, housing, and business incubator. Those are our priorities. If we just get one of those things, that far exceeds our return on the investment. So that's just answer to the question of concern.
Anything else?
For 3B.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion on the floor and a second. Is there any readiness? Seeing any questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item F, Adopt Resolution Number 2016. You have something else?
No, I just had...
Adopt Resolution Number 2016-12-34, authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute and attest the FDOT State Highway System Lighting Maintenance and Compensation Agreement, AN 582 fiscal year 2016-17. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, just had a little small comment on that. It's nothing real serious. Just I noticed we got 192 lights that were dealing with. I don't know if it was an increase. I didn't see anything where it was an increase, but show the 3% increase, which is equated to like a 1,380 something dollar additional. I just wanted to know, what are we getting for it? Are we getting newer lights, better lights, or increased number of lights, or what? Or is that just a standard increase?
For the contract itself?
For the 4,000 to 6,000.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the contract, Commissioner Borum, is a maintenance agreement that the city has with the Department of Transportation to maintain the 192 lights that we currently have within the city. The contract is for us to make sure that at any given time that 90% or more of those lights are in good working order. And this is a compensation agreement for us to maintain those lights that we currently have. It's not a change in the lighting. It's not additional lighting. This is just for the 192 that we currently have for the city of Palacca to be reimbursed for the maintenance that we expend on those lights.
Understood, but it just mentioned in there the 3% increase.
That was a 3% increase of revenue. They're giving us a 3% increase in revenue back for the maintenance that we provide to the Department of Transportation.
Will, will you make a motion to accept that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll accept it.
Motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four on the agenda. Palacca Housing Authority Board Three-Year Term to Expire April 14, 2019.
I like the nomination, Mr. Jones.
Unfortunately, by statute, it's my nomination. And it's backed up by... It is actually backed up by... It has to be confirmed by the commission.
Okay.
I want to take this time out. I saw Mr. Fuljum in the audience. I want to recognize Mr. Fuljum. If you want to introduce yourself to the commission again, you've been on the board since 2005. And if there's... I didn't see any other applicants in here.
Good evening. I'm Marshall Fuljum, 312 St. John's Avenue, and I just wanted to be here to support my application to remain on Palacca Housing Authority.
We also have Darrell Futch and Will Jones who applied for this position as well. And for me, this was a difficult decision, especially considering I've known Mr. Fuljum for many years, classmate. And it's a very difficult decision, considering the level of service that we've gotten from Mr. Fuljum over the years. As a former Palacca Housing Authority, public housing resident, someone who grew up in there, one of my biggest concerns has always been, how do we... Who do we have to come back and tell the story? And that's a hard thing to deal with, because a lot of times what I find is, people have great... You find a lot of great people who are willing to come and serve and bring their business instincts in. But I think a lot of times, people who come from public housing, we never get a chance to... We never get a chance to come back and tell the story, to be able to come back and put your hands on people in a different way. You do it from a volunteering standpoint, but the opportunities to come back on the Housing Authority Board and some of these other places may not necessarily be there. And so, when I look at the applicants, I've got three very strong people from totally different walks of life. You know, Mr. Futch has a, you know, has got a Raxter Riches business story as well. But when I look at Will Jones's story, Will Jones comes from public housing. When the James J. Law Department first started, college educated, has worked in law enforcement, has worked in various positions. And I just see something different. I think when you've been on the inside, you bring a different perspective to the board. And it's even a little different than what you get from somebody who's a resident. And we have residents who are on the board. We have one resident position on the board. But I think when I look at it overall, I think there's an opportunity for us to bring an entirely different perspective to the Housing Authority Board. I think the board have been doing a great job overall. It's by no way a flight on you, Marshall. Mr. Fuljum, I think that you have been an asset, and we definitely commend you for your services. But my recommendation is gonna be to appoint Will Jones to that board. And I think that his... I think that his ability to be able to relate to what it is that the residents are doing at this time, because he's been there in the trenches, and he's grown there. And it's a different mindset. When I go into public housing and I talk to a lot of people, a lot of people are lost. They don't have hope. They don't see a way out. And I think a lot of times, it's easy to sympathize, but it's hard to empathize, because they're two different things. And I really want to see if a new perspective gives us some new opportunities. You know, we've talked about FSS, Family Self-sufficiency Program, some other things that are out there. But I really want to see if a new perspective is gonna allow us to be able to bring a new approach to the board. And my recommendation is gonna be that we appoint Will Jones to the board.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
I definitely want to give the opportunity to ask questions to him. It was kind of rushed into it, but I have a few questions that I would like to ask personally, if you would come back up, if I had the...
That's fine.
If you could, would you tell... What is your vision going out, or what do you bring to the board that will make you, you know, the more qualified candidate to actually stay on that position?
Well, I think you've got to take into consideration that the board as itself is there to empower our staff. Does that mean that I want our staff doing everything? Absolutely not. It means that we need to play an active role in it, too. But I also, as a board member, I want to make myself available to our staff, to our leadership, to our residents, which I, as a board member, have done that. Am I afraid to go into the communities? Absolutely not. We can't micromanage, and we can't downplay our management that we have. So we want to be supportive of them, of our internal management, and make sure that we're being fair to everyone that's coming before our board. And I think that we have a very well-rounded board, and a very well-represented board, and a very proactive board. So, I mean, I totally respect the mayor for choosing to go in a different direction. You know, I've been on the board for nine years. I think my attendance policy, I think the fact that I don't waste our government money going to all kinds of conferences every time you turn around. I'm in the trenches, and I've been in the trenches. Have I been a resident of public housing? No, I have not. I'm sorry, I've not seen that side. But I have been there to try to support our staff, our residents, and the city, and have for 20 years. So to be told that I'm not in that groove is just not right. But, you know, I will respect the commission and the mayor's decision, and we'll...
Well, I don't think my... My position that you're not... Is that you're not in the groove. My position is that I think that there's time to change the groove. I think it's time for us to change the direction that we're going in and try something different. I mean, a lot... And it's nothing against you. I just think that at this point, my recommendation is that we try to bring people who've been in public housing into the fold if we can. We understand that it's a policymaking board. We understand that that board isn't in charge of day-to-day operations. But again, you set the policy and the culture of what goes on. And the one thing that I haven't seen overall is a way out for a lot of people. My vision is to see public housing residents be offered the opportunity to be homeowners and not just renters, to see additional programming and additional stuff. The difference between me and a lot of other folks, I'm in the... I moved out of the neighborhood, but I never left the neighborhood. And so I see things that a lot of other people don't see. And it's not a knock on the board. It's not a knock on you, because you've been a great servant to this community. You've been a great board member. What it is, is it's an opportunity for us to change and allow other people to serve as well. Because it doesn't stop you from serving just because you don't sit on the board. You still have the same opportunity to give back to public housing and to the Housing Authority in the same manner that you have. You just won't be a part of the policymaking board anymore. And so that's just... That's my point.
Can I say something? I really want to... I think you've done a good job, too. But I was one of the people that pushed to get Ms. Annamay Spells on that. And the reason I did was that she had a connection with a lot more people that lived in that area because she had been a teacher. And people don't know it, but she called me, and we'd get in her car at night and go through Housing Authority. Or she'd take me and we'd talk to people. It's... When we have somebody who has been in the Housing Authority, worked their way out, and shown that there is a way out, he'll be an example for those folks that are there to see that they have a chance. And you all asked us to make a difference in this community, and so we're trying to try other things and other ways of getting things done. It's important to me not to see people live in the Housing Authority for years and years. And I know we have some senior citizens, because I have some very good friends in it, that have been there for a while. But we have young people that come into that Housing Authority, and if you give them a focus and a sense of pride, and let them see that if they work hard, they too can get out and be a homeowner and move on and be better citizens in the community. That's what we're trying to do. We've had folks that have been in that Housing Authority almost since it started. And it's all right to take care of us old people, because I like to be taken care of, too. But we got to find a way to approach our younger generations and get them to understand it's more the life than living in a housing authority and getting stuff handed out to you. I did not realize until I talked to Mr. Aaron Robinson, if when some of those young ladies go and get a job and work and get ready to try to get themselves out, the things, the help that they got, like having somebody pay for their kid to go to daycare, is cut off. And they need it more then than they need it when they weren't working, because it gives them somewhere to take that kid, and it gives them some responsibility. And I found out more and more things with some of them get cut off, and we probably need to take a look at, how do we make that change? How do we get people to realize that they might need help a little bit longer, but we want them to be self-sufficient? And what we're looking for in our community now is more self-sufficiency. And so we want to work together as a family, as a unit, to try to do that.
Yes, sir.
Could I ask a question? My question is, then what is your suggestion that we work together between our commission and our board, our board with the current city commission that we're not doing?
We had in the past, you know, we had all this stuff about building homes, apartments in other communities. I don't think we need to be building more and more Housing Authority units. I think what we should be doing is helping some of the people who can get out, get out and move into their own housing units, and that they can also have that space open for those people who really can. And I think that we are coming to that point. The mayor and Mr. Nelson have been talking with a bank that's looking at doing that. And we want to see more of that. We've got people who can really make it. If we... They aren't asking for a handout. They want a handout. And we've had to come to that point where we can really do it.
Well, I think that your current board that you have has been doing that. I mean, I, you know, the decision is pretty much made, and that's fine. But, you know, I served on the board when we didn't have five people at our board meetings, when we didn't have a quorum to do business. You know, luckily now, we do have a quorum to do business, and we've got a well-represented board of five members, along with Ms. Spells as our honorary member. And I was one of the board members that pushed for the Annamay Spells project, if you recall, as well as the library. So I do have a working knowledge of what's going on, and a lot of it I did learn from Ms. Spells. So, I mean, I apologize if I don't take my position on the board as a be-in-and-take-charge position, but, you know, I do care about the board. I do care about the community, and I'll continue to care about the board and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kitchens?
Allegory Kitchens, 1027 South 12th Street. Everything Vice Mayor Brown said and what you said, Mayor Hill, it's absolutely true. Those are all things that Palacca Housing Authority blames, but it's not the business of the board to do that. The board manages the staff. It's the business of Palacca Housing Authority's staff and the residents to do that. And it's admirable that Mr. Jones... And it's admirable that Mr. Jones and Mr. Fulgur want to serve on boards. We have three other boards that need members. And by you removing a faithful board member of, if I heard him right, he came here in 2005 on the board, he's been serving 11 years, and you all get up here and you ask for people to serve on boards, and the vice mayor has said time and time again, when she's asked for people to serve, we can't get people to serve. I think this is sending a bad message to your board members. This is telling your board members, you come to the board, you get on the board, you're faithful, you do your job, and we're not going to respect that, we're going to take you off the board. Mr. Jones is a very apt young man, and he certainly can do very well on one of the other boards. And I think he's already given an example.
So can Mr. Fulgur too, right?
Well, but why do you remove somebody from a position that they already have?
Because it's my decision.
Well, and I understand that and I respect that, and I just...
Obviously you don't.
Well, I do respect it. I'm just a little bit disturbed that I heard the decision had been made about a week ago before this meeting was held. And I think that's very, very...
No, 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 I wouldn't, no. That is not true.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that, because that's what the word on the street is, and it just really concerned me greatly. But I think you need to respect your current board members.
For someone who's sat in this seat for 15 years, I think you've heard the word on the street for over a decade and a half, and half of it's never true.
You're right.
But the fact that you can sit now in the audience and pass those same expressions on people, it's kind of disheartening.
Well, I'm disheartened too, Mayor.
We thank you for your comments though.
Well, you're welcome, and I'm disheartened too.
Have a great day.
You too.
I can barely read it, but is this for the same topic?
Ray?
Okay, all right, I couldn't tell what your topic was for.
I didn't have any blue cards, I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it.
Ray Skarbowski, 105 West St. John's Terrace, East Palaca. But you know, this is the second time that I've heard Mr. Mayor say that we're going to try something different, because the old's not working, and I congratulate him on that. And I've seen you guys doing a difference, that you've been listening to the people, you've been spiritually aware that there is something going on. But when I first came down nine months ago, I didn't know why I was here, but you know, on the housing, I see people actually getting jobs because the account, all these buildings are going to be full in Palaca with business manufacturing. I see this spiritually. I see people working in Palaca, making more money that now they don't want government housing. They're going to find a lot to buy, build their own home, and have ownership in a home. And there are so many things that can happen. But Mr. Mayor and the council members, from the day of prayer to the one meeting many times ago where the Holy Spirit's filling everyone in Palaca, there's a spiritual revival. But you guys are doing good, you come over the bridge, and there's completion of projects that you have allowed the reconstruction. There's growth in Palaca. And it's happening because you all are listening with your hearts and you're sharing in a gentle way. You're going to have disagreements, but the board members that have been doing it, good job to you for the time you've been doing it. Just listen, it's a new season that we've never been in. But I thank you for the work you all do.
Thank you. Danny Fetterdamer from the board.
This is one of the most difficult concurrences that I've had. And I've never, this is the first time on any appointment that I've gotten as much lobbying from individuals in the community as well. But, and my question to Mr. Fulgur would be, and certain, my first of all, my statement is, 11 years that you've served has been 11 tremendous years. And we do appreciate, I do appreciate the service that you've given us. But also, I'd like to be able to ask a question. Would you be willing to serve on any other city boards, such as the planning board, any other of our high boards?
Probably not. This board fits well within my scheduled work and I, you know, after, now the time that I've put in, I don't see applying for the board.
Well, I also like to thank you for your 11 years of service, your dedicated service for being there for the board. But my understanding for what the board should be doing is it should also be holding the, setting direction to make sure that the people become self-sufficient. And for over the 11 years, what percentage of the people in the Housing Authority has moved from being in the Housing Authority to self-sufficiency, to home, from renters to owners? Do you have any number?
I don't have a number that I can give you on that, I'm sorry.
Well, as a board member, I think we need to know these type of things, because those I would see as successes. And here's what the program is all about, is not to keep people on for lifelong residences. I understand that we've got people who are in there that are elderly, we've got people who may be disabled, and then we've got the kids. Everybody else in the projects or in the authority, we want to make sure that these people, who are working-class people, become self-sufficient, such as one of the applicants today. And we have numerous other stories where people who were in these same positions, they excel beyond that. So we've just got to make sure that we put people in place that are going to hold people accountable, not because of... We just want to make sure that the board knows the direction that they need to go in and understand and move forward, instead of just being served on the board.
All right, we're not going to beat this, we're not going to beat this dead horse in the head any longer. Let's move forward as there, I've made my recommendation as your motion.
A second.
My recommendation's been made. We will go ahead and...
Make it.
We will go ahead and now have a vote on my recommendation. All in. Roll call.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five on the agenda, public hearing. 2002 Florida Avenue, Planning Board Recommendation to Annex and Assign Single Family Residential Land Use and Zoning to Property for Putnam County R2 Residential Mix. James Gary Wallace, owner of Palaca Building and Zoning applicant. Item A is the Annexation Ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida annexing into corporate limits of the city of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 202 Florida Drive, located in Section 11, Township 10 South, range 26 East. Public records of Putnam County, Florida contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing an effective date.
A second. Motion on the floor in a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, Res zoning ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida be amended from Putnam County R1HA residential single-family, City R1A single-family residential for a parcel identified as 202 Florida Drive, located in Section 11, Township 10 South, range 26 East, providing per separability and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor in a second. We're open for the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item six, public hearing, 1620 Hudson Avenue, Planning Board Recommendation to Annex and Assign Single Family Residential Land Use and Zoning to Property from Putnam County R1A residential single-family, Terry White and Shereen Wilford owners, Palaca Building and Zoning applicant. Item A is the Annexation Ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 1620 Hudson Avenue, located in Section 13, Township 10 South, range 26 East. Public records of Putnam County, Florida contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, Res zoning ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida be amended from Putnam County R1A residential single-family to City R1A single-family residential for the following property, 1620 Hudson Avenue, Section 13, Township 10 South, range 26 East, providing per separability and providing an effective date.
So move. Motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number seven, public hearing, 203 Central Avenue, Planning Board Recommendation to Annex and Assign Single Family Residential Land Use and Zoning to Property from Putnam County R2 Mixed Residential Mix, Robert Michael Ratliff, owner of Palaca Building and Zoning applicant. Item A, Annexation Ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 203 Central Avenue, located in Section 11, Township 10 South, range 26 East. Public records of Putnam County, Florida contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor in a second. Is anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here for public hearing, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, Res zoning ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida be amended from Putnam County R2 residential mix to City R1A single-family residential for the following property, 203 Central Avenue, Section 11, Township 10 South, range 26 East, providing per separability and providing an effective date.
Planning Board Recommendation to Annex and Assign Single Family Residential Land Use and Zoning to Property from Putnam County R1HA residential single-family, Joseph Angela Stillward owners, Palaca Building and Zoning Department applicant. Item A, Annexation Ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 207 Skeet Club Road, located in Section 3, Township 10 South, range 26 East. Public records of Putnam County, Florida contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing an effective date.
So move. Motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, Res zoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida be amended from Putnam County R1A residential single-family to City R1AA single-family residential for a parcel identified as 207 Skeet Club Road, located in Section 30, Township 10 South, range 26 East, providing per separability and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor, in a second. Motion in a second on the floor. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing.
Yes.
Any discussion? Questions been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item nine. 908 North 20th Street, Mr. Crowe, before we get started. Item A is Annexation Ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 908 North 20th Street, located in Section 1, Township 10 South, range 26 East. Public records of Putnam County, Florida contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing an effective date.
So move. There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here for public hearing, we'll close public hearing. Mr. Crowe, we've got a bit of discussion on this one. I know we talked about the owner on this property, did we mail the communication to the owner?
We have sent a certified letter to the applicant. We've emailed and had phone discussions with him. He understands what is happening. We have not heard from him lately despite completed calls and emails. So I hope that that means he's fine with things.
And just for the pleasure of the board, can you give them a brief overview as to what's going on with the property and the rezoning and what the restrictions would be?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. And this is something we may run into again, but when we annex from certain Putnam County zoning categories, the county, by and large, allows mobile homes in most of their residential zoning categories. The city does not. The city has a special zoning for mobile homes, which is our core. When this property came in, it was a mobile home. We did make him aware that as such, if it was destroyed beyond a certain amount, he could not bring in another mobile home, he would have to build according to code. We did look at the prospects of rezoning that property to a mobile home zoning, but it is isolated, and that would be spot zoning. We did not recommend that. He understood, he had a little reluctance, but we explained to him that there are certain things, for example, that could be done to convert a mobile home to more of a permanent nature, such as a foundation and skirting and whatnot. So that's kind of a brief explanation of this situation.
And did we receive any communication back once the letter was sent?
Only discussions on the phone. We did not receive any written communication from them.
Is there any other questions from the commission?
I have a question. Why would we, if there's... The mobile home is being replaced now, am I understanding, he's trying to give...
No.
No, the mobile home is there. His concern was if something happened to it, he would not be able to bring in a new mobile home.
Okay, that's all I have.
He applied for this intervention, right?
That's correct.
And he did, you had the discussion with, he did with the...
That's correct.
There's just been a long period of no communication at this point.
Right, that's correct.
And that's why I wanted to give you guys the background, just so the commission could make...
That means he's grandfathered in.
You got anything done?
No, I think that's...
Right. So we've had that discussion. Questions been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, Res zoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida be amended from Putnam County R2 residential two-family to City R1A single-family residential for the following property, 908 North 20th Street, Section 1, Township 10 South, range 26 East, providing per separability and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor in a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 10, public hearing, 161 and 163 Comfort Road.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 163 Comfort Road, located in Section 37, Township 10 South, range 26 East. Public records of Putnam County, Florida contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here for public hearing, we'll close public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crowe, is this the piece of broad today that a young man came up and pulled at one point and really didn't talk to the owner and all?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Norwood. If I can be brief, the original application was filed by the owner's representative who worked for the company but did not officially represent the company. And he found out and came and was surprised, and we immediately pulled it, went through it, talked to the real representatives, and found out their intent was the rear parcel to put that annexed in and put it in industrial zoning. We did have some concerns at that time about the industrial zoning being proximate to the single-family homes in Crystal Coast. So we worked out with the neighbors and with the Pump Creek folks, a workable situation with a buffer, a natural buffer. I think everybody's on board, and that's why we're here.
So the owner gives the applicant here?
That's correct.
So it's going to city plan industrial zoning?
That's correct.
And you said you worked out a buffer. Did you work it out by eliminating part of the property? Did you work it out by eliminating part of the property from the planned industrial zoning so that it remains in a zoning category that can't be converted to industrial?
We did not do that. We essentially, through the P I D, we had the ability to put in a condition that there be a natural fifty-foot buffer with a wall, which the owner agreed to border the southern property line. And accomplished that, I guess.
We want to make sure, because you know, we had all that trouble with Wendy C. They promised the buffer, and those people never got that buffer. So we're sure that this is going to take care of the buffer for them?
That's because they can't touch it. I mean, they can underbrush and maintain it, but they can't take trees out.
Any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Oppose motion carries unanimously. Item B.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacka, Florida, be amended as to that certain property located in Section thirty-seven. Township nine South, range twenty six east, including one sixty-one Comfort Road, to be rezoned from R one A A residential, single family, to P I D planned industrial development, and including one sixty-three to be rezoned from Putnam County I H Industrial Heavy to P I D planned industrial development, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor in a second by Commissioner Campbell. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Oppose motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number eleven on the agenda. Ordinance Res zoning seven two zero one and seven two two zero P R C Way. Planning Board Recommendation to Assign Planned Industrial Zoning to the Property from Putnam County P U D to Sykes Realities seventy-two oh one P R C Way and Premier Palack LLC seventy-two twenty P R C. Owners Palack Building and Zoning, applicant, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palacka, Florida, be amended from Putnam County P U D Planned Unit Development to City P I D Planned Industrial Development, Putnam County Business Park, for two parcels identified as seventy-two oh one and seventy-two twenty P R C Way, located in Section four, Township ten South, range twenty six east. Providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor in a second. Now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing.
Yeah, I got a question. Is there any special conditions under this put...
Commissioner Norwood, this is an existing planned industrial development, and it's got a standard, I think it's, I believe it's, it's got the standard allowable uses. It's got a probation on outdoor storage. It's got some basic landscaping requirements, but it's just pretty much stripped down. It's not a very demanding P I D.
Any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Oppose motion carries unanimously. Item twelve on the agenda, Public Hearing Ordinance, revising subdivision plat sixty-one oh nine Third Manor Road West. Planning Board Recommendation to Vacate Two City Control Easements in the Rear Yard of the Property, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, approving a final plat for vacation. An easement located on property identified as sixty-one oh nine Third Manor West, located in Section ten Township ten South, range twenty six east. Public records of Putnam County, Florida, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor. Your second.
I'm sorry. I, Betsy, you may not have had time to take a look at it, but later this afternoon, I had sent you an email with a revised or modified ordinance. Did you get that?
I have not. I haven't seen it.
I brought a copy of it. Essentially, if I could, Mr. Mayor. A citizen brought to my attention today, provided me with the specific language of the plat dedication, which I had not seen before. And the plat dedication dedicates the easements in Webb's Viking Manor, which is the correct name of that subdivision, to the public and to the purchasers of the property. The first point I'd like to make is that nothing the city does, and I want to make it clear, nothing the city does is in it is going to be able to or be in a position to vacate the rights of the purchasers of the property to those easements. So we can vacate the easements as to the public, but not as to a specified group of the public whom the easements were granted under the plat. That's number one. Secondly, and it's true that the Webb's clauses of the ordinance state that the planning commission recommended that the city staff be able to vacate the easements in the rest of the subdivision if an application was made for those. And that's true. The planning commission did. But I believe that because they are dedicated easements in the plat and in the nature that were described, I think that they're going to have to be advertised separately if somebody wants to vacate a particular easement. So I have no difficulty with these easements being vacated. But I've changed the language of the ordinance. And I gave it, my copy Betsy got now, Betsy has now, but changed the language of the ordinance to provide that basically just the easements that were advertised, noticed, and went to the planning commission for hearing would be the ones vacated, which are behind the one piece of property that was at issue. I don't believe that the city's in a position to delegate the staff to administratively vacate the remainder of the ordinances in the subdivision without a public hearing.
So we are right with the motion with that one piece of property?
We can change the language. Change the language, and I can read it to you if Betsy can give it back to me.
We can.
Or we can...
We can let her read it. We've got a motion on the floor. And so for housekeeping purposes, can we withdraw the motion?
Yes.
So, okay, that's fine. The motion's withdrawn. So can we now read the...
The only changes would be at Section one. Section one would now read as follows. The easements identified in Exhibit one shall be and are hereby vacated in the Webb's Viking Manor subdivision, period. Short and sweet. And then in Section two, I simply corrected that to read clerk of court of Putnam County rather than clerk of circuit court, because technically clerk is clerk of court, not clerk of circuit court.
So let's go ahead and... Let's go ahead and, just for the record, Mr. Griggers, can you read the ordinance in entirety? The ordinance in this entirety?
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida, approving a final plat for vacation of an easement located on property identified as sixty-one oh nine Third Manor West, located in Section ten Township ten South, range twenty six east. Public records of Putnam County, Florida, providing for separability and providing an effective date. Whereas application has been made for a final plat to vacate a twenty feet wide beautification easement as ten foot wide utility easement located in the rear yard of sixty-one oh nine Third Manor West within the City of Palacka, Florida. And whereas the holder of such easements, the City of Palacka, does not object to the closure of these easements if they are not and will be utilized for their respective intention. And whereas the planning board's recommendation was to allow city building and zoning staff to administratively vacate similarly unutilized easements in the Viking Manor subdivision. And whereas all the necessary procedural steps have been accomplished, including a public hearing before the planning board of the City of Palacka on April five, two thousand sixteen, and two public hearings before the city commission of the City of Palacka on April eighteen, two thousand sixteen, and May twelve, two thousand sixteen. And whereas the city commission of the City of Palacka has determined that said final plat should be adopted. Now therefore being enacted by the citizens of the City of Palacka, Florida, Section one, the easements identified in Exhibit one shall be and are hereby vacated in the Webb's Viking Manor subdivision. Description of property, Webb's Viking Manor, map book five, page seventy-eight, block C, lot twenty-five, identified as sixty-one oh nine Third Manor West, and Putnam County Tax Parcel Number ten dash ten dash twenty-six dash nine one three zero dash zero zero three zero dash zero two five zero. Section two, a copy of this plat shall be filed with the office of the clerk of court of Putnam County. Section three, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its filing passage by the city commission. And then it shall be passed and adopted by the city commission of the City of Palacka on the twelfth day of May, two thousand sixteen.
I have one, one little small correction. I think you read, you read April eighteenth, it was April twenty-eighth on the reading part.
April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, and May twelve, two thousand sixteen.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion approved.
Motion on the floor, your second. Motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any discussion? Questions called. All in favor say aye. Oppose motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item thirteen on the agenda, Administrative Reports, the City Manager's Report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The consensus of the commissioners a couple meetings back was for myself and Mr. Griggers to meet with the cemetery providers. We've done such on the rules and regulations of the cemetery. And it was a consensus of those folks that the rules and regulations that we currently have in place are good rules and regulations, and we simply need to enforce what we currently have in place.
Any discussion? Enough said. Administrative Reports. Mr. Crowe.
Mr. Mayor, business as usual, but we're pleased to have Linda Inman from the cemetery area coming over and building, doing, we're very pleased to have her.
Thank you.
I'm very happy to see this many annexations going on, and I'd like to see us be able to let people know that they can annex into the city because we've been trying to annex into the city for a while to square it up. And I'd like to see us come up, come up with a plan to kind of let folks know that they wanted to apply to annex in, to get the water in, so we can become part of the City of Palacka that they can do something.
Chief. Glad to have you back. Chief Shaw.
I give up then. This just occurred and... Last Friday, Black Police Department held its first festival. Festivals within our neighborhoods, a festival occurred at Washington Street, Washington Street Festival. It consisted of a community event for bouncy houses, hot dogs, cotton candy, popcorn, and snow cones. Our drivers be able to get out a survey to the community residents so we can find out how better one to serve the neighbors, residents in the neighborhood, and how one, they can tell us what they see or view of their issues within the neighborhood was. We did over two hundred surveys. We are tallying up the information from those, but key, key issues that we heard from the residents. Well, one was traffic issues, both in the morning and the school. And the other was the fights, which mainly occurred at the school, but in the afternoon time. So we were able to address and communicate with the residents during that time. It was a bunch of information that was gathered from them. We are working right now to put together some response and be able to address those issues. We have future plans for other festivals within the community in different areas that we've seen that has problem areas, but we want to be able to, again, hear from the citizens and not only look at from our point of view. So you'll be hearing about some more events coming up. Partners for the Washington Street Festival is P H A. Putnam County Reentry Program. Shine was also there as well. We had individual volunteers from organizations such as Partner Children and Families. All came out and assisted in handing out those flyers, walking two blocks in north, south, east, and west direction so we can make sure we make contact with adults in the area to get those flyers taken care of. It was a very successful event. We were very happy on everything that we were able to get accomplished. We had Commissioner Borum that came out and witnessed it. Also, city manager, Mr. Suss came out, and we were able to accomplish a lot that we feel that is moving toward our direction and bridging that gap between the community and the department. The following day, the twenty-third, we had our Putnam County Palacka Pride cleanup. It was held at Oak Street, sixteen and Oak Street. Very successful cleanup. Just some of the successes from that event, we had sixty-nine volunteers come out. Forty-four bags of trash was collected, six tires and two bikes were removed from the area. Organizations helped, the area covered was three point four eight miles. Saint John's Avenue, Kirill Avenue, South Thirteenth Street, South Sixteenth Street. And we also went ahead and covered one lot over on South Eighteenth Street, which wasn't included, but it needed some attention. Children's Home Society. It was a very successful event. We had opportunity to get our information for the next event, which is the countywide event, which is on the twenty-first of May. We'll be meeting here at the city hall, and we're constantly getting out more information to get more volunteers. Both events was very successful. Something that we were able to put together, two major events within a two-day period. We've seen as a big success for the police department, and I wanted to make sure that the city, the city commission knew that the city knew the work that we're doing moving forward.
Chop up, Dan.
I certainly like to thank Chief Shaw and his staff for what they've been doing for the past few weeks here. They came in, that community outreach event, where they're showing that they're reaching out. They are reaching out to the community, breaking down the barriers, making good relations. These are the kind of things that we need in the Washington Street event, which I was, somebody came to me and said, hey, you know, there's something major going on over on Washington Street. They got cars, cars blocked off over there, and we got from sixteen to seventeen. So, you know, I happened to stop in and take a look, and it would, you know, end up being a very, very positive event. And these are the kind of things that we need to break down the barriers between law enforcement and the community. These are the things that we had when we had that crime forum. And Chief Shaw has taken heed to what he's heard and what he wanted to do for the community. So I'd like to take my hat off and my hair off and thank you guys for all that you're doing for our community.
Taking your hair off?
And last, but not least, last but not least, the Palacka Pride. There was the second largest crowd that we had to come out and participate. Last year, we had over a hundred and something people on Saint John's. So we haven't beat twenty fifteen yet, but we are on to a good start for twenty sixteen. Thanks, sir.
Those are commissioner comments, too? Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Holmes? Mr. Griggers? Mr. Suggs?
Just following up on the commission's request to meet with the county officials about working on Saint John's Avenue from College to Ziegler. Sat in on the transportation meeting with them on Tuesday. We're currently partnering with the, with the County Federal Works Department on a potential grant. I'm drafting a letter for signature of support tomorrow on the grant, and hopefully we'll be moving forward on that. But they were very receptive to the College to Ziegler project.
Commissioner Borum, the remainder of your comment time.
I, I give my time.
You got that down? Make sure the newspaper got that. Commissioner Norwood.
One thing. I know, do we not concur on doing, having the city manager conduct staff evaluations?
Yes, we do.
Okay, did those get...
They're, they're in the process. There are several of them. I'm in the process of drafting that, so.
Message me.
Commissioner Campbell, on the roll.
Yes, just briefly, I want to address the issue to the manager and spoke to him about the issue. And it was my, to my understanding, that he has a report or something to give to us tonight about the phone system.
Yes, sir, if I could, Mr. Mayor. Spoke with Mr. Reynolds, who's got a lot more history with this system. We actually called in the A T and T rep today to address an issue that I actually had on my phone. And one of the things that we were, we've done is we've, we've put in, where the phone will actually ring now in three separate locations, so two at the front counter, and then on a third desk, which is going to be in my administrative assistance office. The more lines that we add, the more rings that is going up, you know, that the phone will have before anybody will answer. It'll actually go back to voicemail. And with those three rings, it will ring as many as nine times before it will actually transfer back over to the voicemail. So we don't want to continue to add lines because it just can take that much longer. The issue, you know, the issue is we probably need to look at, and I understand it's been a request for the last couple, three years of upgrading our phone system to where we can do a more integrated process and be able to spread those calls out amongst more folks and not have an issue like that. It's also my understanding that if two people are actually calling in on the system and they're going through the system and the third person calls in, there's no notification and that phone just rings on the other end, on the caller's end, and there's no notification on our end that there's a third call coming in. So there's an issue there that we need to address.
Can we look at a live body as opposed to dealing with auto, dealing with automated system? I know we're looking, I know you've been looking at having different people, reassigning people to different places. But, and it's funny that you brought this up because I, I called in the other day trying to get in because if you call the main number, you try to get the building and zoning, you can't get there because they're not listed on the prompter. But, right. And so just those type things, you know, and then you're trying to get to someone who can redirect you, it's hard. Customer service is key. If people are paying taxes and we're, and they've got assessments, then they should get service. And I think we truly need to look at having a customer service rep in the front of this building that can answer a telephone and redirect people to where they need to go and give general information. Because one of the things that we have to understand is that at the end of the day, this is a business. And if this business isn't going to put out a product that's going to allow our citizens to feel as though they're welcome here, then, you know, that we're not doing what we're supposed to do. And so we need to look at a customer service rep. I know that's something the city manager's talked about in the past, but we need to look at that sooner than later because I think it will take a lot of the, because we, we feel more, you're feeling more calls of, I can't get to a body or I can't get to a person. And I think, you know, we can talk about the phone system all day, but we got to have somebody to answer the phone. And so, and I think it's a lot easier for us because the volumes of calls that are coming in can easily be redirected as opposed to people going to their voicemail and then having to send that person to somewhere else. We just need to get, we need to create that customer service place where people come and they are directed to where they need to be and information's disseminated to what department to be in, considering the fact that all our departments aren't housed within city hall.
Mr. Mayor, I, I guess I would concur as well. And we've just conducted a survey for members of a, one of the businesses that I'm affiliated with. And that service, that they were, that, that survey said, asked the question, would you rather talk to a, a voicemail or would you rather talk to a live body? And it comes back a live body every time.
Every time.
And so, you know, and I don't think we need to conduct the same survey here. I think if it's already been done, we could use, you know, what somebody else has done to improve our services will.
Yeah, if I could just follow up on that, that's exactly what it is that we've been talking about doing and looking at doing. As you know, we're going to be making changes real soon where the gas, the gas authority and the water department are going to be merging. And so what we're going to be doing is changing that location up front and housing those individuals that will actually answer our telephones instead of going to a, a automated system. And so we've actually started working on that project already, getting the organizational chart in place and where we're going to put people, who's going to be over that area, and also starting to look at what we need to do to modify the area up front that will actually house these folks to be able to make it a working environment and go ahead and get that in place. That is certainly something that is being discussed already and is already, some of those pieces of the puzzle are already been put in place. We've, we've actually got some dollars that were allocated this year in the budget for each department to be able to do some renovations. So we can use those dollars that were allocated for that to do the upgrades of what we need to do here in city hall. And one thing that we are certainly looking at is those departments that need to be housed or should be housed in city hall are going to be housed in city hall. And that way we have as many folks under one roof as we can. That in itself will also lend to good customer service. So yes, those plans are all being discussed and we're actually working on those now. I've, I've got Mr. Reynolds and I working down, putting those names to those seats now. So we'll be able to come back to you commissioners real soon for what it is that we'd like to do.
Okay, thank you.
May just wrap that up real quick. Just one, well, two more things. One more, actually we participated in a program that provided summer intern, internship opportunities for our young constituents. We have not been contacted by the particular group again, but I would still like to move forward with the possibility of creating some type of internship program through the city that would allow our high school seniors or high school juniors or the, it can be figured out of who we would like, but given the, the work on local government at that age because we do have individuals that are interested in government, but we don't necessarily reach out to them to provide them that access. So I would like to definitely see that happen and I will be more than willing to volunteer my time to make sure that it happens. Outside of that, we have, if you've been tuned to what's happening in Palaca via Facebook, the latest, greatest talk has been with the splash pad and it's something that we talked about about eleven months ago. And I would like to see us just provide an update for the citizens. Ms., Ms., Ms. Carrera and Ms. Allegra have both chimed in on it to let individuals know that, hey, we are, that has been in the forefront of our mind, but I would like to see some kind of official statement come from city hall saying that we, we're not, it's something that we are not going to do, however, at this time it's something that we can't afford to do. So if that's something that we can do, I would like to definitely see them start addressing issues like that to let citizens know that, hey, we are working on certain things.
I'd like to say that Monday, as we went over to the veterans for a forum, several of them that have been here and talked to us, I'd asked them about helping us to raise funds and get started and they said they're just waiting for us to get back to them. So that might be...
And that is the case, you do have people that are interested in making sure that we fundraise for it, but I don't know if that's something that the recreation team can pick up and just have a subdivision that, or one person that can take inquiries or take that kind of stuff to kind of help us get the ball rolling with that. Because we didn't, I mean, even with the, the water fountain, once we made the pitch, somebody came and took it up. So I think if that's something that we can make a community effort, let's go ahead and make it happen.
I think Mr. Griffith is already working on that with the nature-based playground from the Firdapp grant. And so I, I think he's already trying to find a way to incorporate it into the design.
We tell him to talk to the veterans, they, they, they said that they're really interested in, that's another monument, our veterans, if they help us get it done. And I think they'd be a good lead organization for us.
And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Griffith's just, you're right on time. You, you were talking, at one point you were talking about trying to see if you could fit that into your nature-based playground? The splash pad proportion?
Yes, we're, we're looking at incorporating more of a water run in the playground so the kids can play in water, but it's nothing more than an inch or two deep and it, it's integrated with sand. But we do have two prime areas. We can leave an area in the nature-based playground or it can be located as it's shown in the master plan currently where the flag is at the terminus of Saint John's Avenue.
But talk to, talk to those veterans because I had already approached them and they're ready, they just waiting for somebody to get back to them.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were done.
I, I just wanted to let you, this time last week, I was, I was off at dinner. I went to the South, Southeastern Municipal Conference. It's a leadership conference that's done by the Florida League of Cities or people on the executive board. We had a talk and several talks by several people. I brought the information back, I gave it, I know you guys are always doing a lot of stuff, but it's, I passed it along to our, I passed it along to our city manager. We had speakers. The governor of Virginia came and spoke to us and they had ten billion dollar grant given to them to work problems out in the, in the state of Virginia. And they made partnerships with Florida, with the federal, state, and local government and, and one of the universities there. It's a big thing moving. The other thing they were looking at is having most of their buildings go green and they took us for a tour on one of their buildings that's an experimental building. They pay no light bill, no water bill. The sunroof through the light and the water is collected from rain and then processed in it. And so I brought the information back, they took the city manager, he talked with him, he'll be able to do, to know about it. We also had a really good experience with bands and they had the, all of the Army Navy bands, Marine Corps. They had a big festival there and they had a three-hour program on it. I brought the booklet back about it because I think that it might be something that we could do with the Florida School of the Arts. It might not be that big, but it might be something that brings people to it. It's very successful, it's been there for, for twenty years they've been doing it. The other thing is that I will be going on Wednesday to San Antonio for our Florida League of Cities insurance risk, management risk. And that's, that's the insurance company that, for the folks who don't know, that insures all of our buildings, cars, and every other thing that we have at Self Health. And if you don't see me, that, that is where I'll be. If any of you are wondering this information, I'd be glad to share it with you or the city manager has it. Is that fast enough for you?
Take your time.
No, y'all always give me two minutes and a half, so I feel that that would be as much as my two minutes and a half.
That was actually three and a half. Mr. Suggs?
Yeah, I just wanted to also share with the commission that at the last League of Cities Dinner this past Thursday, Thursday, I had an opportunity to speak with the chamber president from Platte County, Mr. Doug Conkey, as well as the county manager, Second Conclusus. And just wanted to share that there is still discussion that's taking place on not only the bypass route that's coming through, but also the, the opportunity to continue to talk about raising the Shands Bridge, which will give an opportunity for Palaca and the court, an opportunity to grow. I just wanted to share that there's still being positive conversations about those items as well.
Mayor, can I say one more thing? I'm, I'm with you. No, I want people to know that this travel that I'm doing right now is not at the expense of the city. It's paid from the boards that I serve on, but the city gets all the information and knowledge that I collect from, so... And I, well, I do take stuff with me when I go.
Lots of stuff.
Palaca Daily News, your books are over, all over thirteen states in the United States because I passed them out.
Anything else?
I make a motion here, General. Mogustar.
Sorry, but your motion wasn't recognized.
I think Chief touched on the countywide cleanup. It's an opportunity for us to get five hundred volunteers. Our goal is to have five hundred volunteers out for the countywide cleanup on May twenty-first. We're looking for the city of Palaca to have the largest number of volunteers out of anybody in this county. We, we reached out to the schools, reached out to all of our municipal partners to try to get this in place. We've issued a challenge out to all five municipalities throughout the county as well as any other partners that we could think of. So we're, we're trying to get everyone on board with the, with the great Palaca cleanup, keep cleaning up, greening up. Secondly, I've good news, there's an opportunity, me and the city manager, we were on a phone call the other day. Bethune Cook, we're contacted by Bethune-Cookman University. And I know we talked about partnering with them, but their Center for Economic and Entrepreneurship Development contacted us about an opportunity for a rural economic development and technical assistance grant. So with the blessing of the commission, we want to move forward on that grant. There's an opportunity, there are federal dollars out there, millions of federal dollars are available for the technical assistance and economic development grants. These grants are, the economic development grant is a planning grant. It allows us to do just what we've been talking about for the planning process, which is to put together a true E D plan with the, with the empirical data analysis that we've talked about. And so they will come in and do a deed assessment. They'll look at what's going on in this community and they will put those assessments together and they'll actually help develop the, the plan to move forward. And so the grants are based upon many different factors, including need, economics, everything that we, you know, everything that fits us into that category and makes us very viable for the grant. The technical assistance aspects of it gives us just an additional portion to implementation. And that brings into all of the data collection aspects. And so I, I think it's a great opportunity for this city and by consensus, I hope that we can move forward with that with Bethune-Cookman. Mr. Sandra Stroy over at, at the center is actually, would be the lead person on that and they're very excited about an opportunity to work with Palaca. And then finally, we talked a few months ago about the mayoral oversight committee, dealing with the core areas of life, allowing citizens to sit on committees and give input back to the commission. And I think that, you know, while we have the long conversation about board members and appointments and things of that nature, there's an opportunity for us all to play an important role in what goes on. This community is not, Palaca didn't get in the situation that it's in overnight. And Palac is not going to get out of its situation with five people making decisions. Those decisions and the, the work has to be put in by everyone. And we have a lot of people throughout this community who have significant skill sets. They've got significant information and input that will allow us to be able to better serve and make decisions in various areas. There are many areas that we don't have the expertise in, quite frankly. But if we allow, but if we start to use all of our resources within this community, Palaca can be a much better place. It's, you know, the time that five people reign over the city and make decisions is over. It's time for us to have a, a, a very inviting approach where everybody has a vested interest in the outcome and we begin to move Palaca forward by allowing the people of Palaca to have a voice that will be heard and will be heard and listened to. And so that's, those are my comments. For anyone else, the draft is coming up and it's already started and I'm waiting for the picks to come in. We are now adjourned.